Do I send it to me?
Good afternoon. We're going to call the seven city council meetings in the audience, but you have a court. Tonight's application, we're going to have a press member of the council to bring us the application, is Jody Jackson.
Dear Lord, I thank you for this day, for our, I thank you for each and every, um, city council, that city person is on this council right now, Lord, just for to remind how, what to say and how to say it, Lord, where I think her others thank you, or if anybody that needs you, Lord, that you're just sitting right here, right now, Lord, and I just don't know what to say, and Jesus, they have a gift.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I was standing for the pledge.
I pray to the nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in a liberal, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Court.
President Bowie.
Present.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Present.
Councilwoman Yagla.
Present.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. As stated before, you do have a court. Character trait of a month was inherited, recognizing my duties and dedication. Council members, you have before you the gender, uh, I'm like a man, Mrs. Gender, uh, add one citizen to the citizen's request, Miss Deborah Reed Howard, was my talk, she did notify me, other that's not to be on the agenda, and she put it in my mailbox, and I just totally forgot, but I do have a copy of the, uh, request that's inherited. So we're going to add, Miss Deborah Reed Howard, after, um, Mr. Sam Walker, and Parker Law, and Ward Seven, across from one of the other seats. Was that an amendment? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some, Mr. President.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Benjamin, you have a second.
Second.
Our second, Councilwoman Bowie. Any follow-up discussion? Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the two of us approved, unanimous. Uh, before I go through the citizens, John, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Benjamin, I think we have a third council member in the audience.
Oh, please. I had to talk to the guy with the liquor license, I'm sorry. We do have a fellow council member in the audience, you all, if you'll stand, Councilman David Reddick is here, he spoke to our young people today at our annual Black Man Hills Symposium, so I just wanted us to give, uh, a good salve of recognition to him and thank him for serving selfless youth, so we can give him a good salve hand.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Also, from the Senate agenda, uh, we have two liquor licenses for first reading at our last council meeting, um, and it passed, uh, September May 20, both here in the flying time, uh, just a few minutes.
Oh.
Too bad. Okay?
Okay. Um, okay, so I think the honor is here, Mr. President.
Yes.
And, um, please stand and tell us your name, I don't want to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, and both of these are for all prances?
Yes.
Okay, and that is the question that I had, because they were all the same address, uh, one said that, uh, it's going to be a lounge, and one said that it was going to be, uh, all prances, and so I wanted to clear that though before I voted on that and asked the council to vote with me or not, because you do sit in all wards, so hopefully, even though they're the same address, I visited your place, it's, it's kind of like you have to separate.
Yes.
And, and they're all prances.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have four items to consider for the Senate agenda. Item number one, um, was introduced by Councilwoman Shaw, to approve the first reading, audit zero one oh three, that's eighteen nineteen, establishing penalties for discharge of five hours in city minutes, police use Dixon. The Senate item number two, to approve a detailed beer and table wine, Alliance Pride Nine, off-premise only, located at three thousand Citizen Parkway. The Senate item number three, to approve the live retail liquor price two license for Alliance Pride Wine and Spirit, off-premise only, located at three thousand Citizen Parkway Unit B. And the Senate item number four, Councilwoman, we have already, uh, voted to approve on January the eighth, uh, for three fire investigators, investigators, and also we approve for seven. The only thing we need to do is amend the budget, so we can just put the names, uh, in the budget to pursue the three fire investigators, but the management showed that the lawyer did approve them, and, uh, approved the three fire investigators. Also, we approve the salary, uh, for the, uh, five fire investigators. So at this time, I think this is about a third time doing, we've been working with this over a year or so, trying to move forward with the fire investigation. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Mr. President, why are we doing this again?
Well, basically, uh, we just needed to put the names in the budget, on time.
I'm going to name those names tonight?
Uh, yes.
Can we name the names for the minutes?
Yeah, we definitely will. All right, to amend the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, to improve, to include the three day post fire investigation, with the increase in salaries coming from the banking positions in the fire department, and the three names are Willie Mason, Arred Catway, and, uh, Richard Bird, are the three new fire investigators. At this time, Chair would maintain a motion to approve all four items for the Senate agenda. A motion by Councilwoman Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Women, uh, Thomas, any follow-up discussion? Roll call, Madam Court.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla.
Yes, for the order, I have same on two and three, as you're aware, I do not hold on your liquor license, and number four, I believe no, on honor, January the eighth, I have to leave.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
I have staying, I do not agree with it.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council members. You have before you the February twelve minutes, hopefully, everyone can have the opportunity to approve the minutes for February twelve minutes, are there any corrections, deletions? At this time, Chair would maintain a motion to approve the February twelve minutes.
Go move.
A motion by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Bowlin, any follow-up discussion? Roll call, Madam Court.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla.
Yes, for the order, I have same, because I wasn't sure what it was.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, minutes were approved. Council members, do you have any upcoming announcements, any wars, warnings, or anything at this time that you would like to, uh, burn for? Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, I would like to make the public aware that we will have another cleanup on March ninth, so please stay tuned for that as we prepare for the annual pre-visit, we had our cleanup prior to the jubilee on the sixteenth, however, Councilwoman Thomas and I will be cleaning up in the downtown area, starting at three thirty tomorrow, from three thirty to five P M., so if you would like to join us, I will meet right here at City Hall, and we'll go out all the way through the downtown area, to ensure that the overflowing garbage cans are picked up and any trash that may be around our area, prior to our visitors this week. So tomorrow at three thirty, and on March ninth, please come out and help.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Any other announcements?
Let me say thank you to, uh, all of those who attended, uh, reportedly more than equal one for, and Special Agent, um, Dwight Brown, uh, who I know will be viewing David's video, so, hey, uh, special thank you to Agent Brown from the A T F, who came and gave the citizens, uh, some very good information that we need, news that we can use, and speaking of news we can use, uh, since the media, uh, were, now, was not present at our Black Man Hills Symposium, I am, and if you're here in the audience, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, these, these were some young people doing good things, positively selling, I'm going to write the story up and I'm going to send it to you, so that you may put it in your paper, in your newspaper, your newspaper, for the local paper, so thank you all, to all of the panelists who will be watching David's video, and who are listening, thank you all for pouring into the lives of our young people, we have to take care of them now, because they're going to have to take care of us later, so thanks to all of you all on that part, I know that you all couldn't make it last night, because, you know, when I had to, when I scheduled this venue, we were meeting on Thursday at the time, and then we moved the meeting to Monday, and so next year, we'll connect our ways, some, some kind of way around that, so thank you all, uh, who had the opportunity to come.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I want to say, uh, four or seven will be having, uh, our first ward meeting, also, we will be talking about, um, dealing with public safety in that area, we have very concern about things that are happening in Ward Seven, uh, people want to hear, uh, what can we do about the gun, the gunshots? Uh, we've been had, uh, we had an incident last night, and a lot of my constituents in that area are very upset, and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm afraid, I'm glad that, um, LaShaw is bringing, Councilwoman LaShaw is bringing an alternate to the floor, because we need it, because it's, it's getting bad, and, um, I just want, uh, everybody that's over in Ward Seven to, we have our first meeting to come out, because we're going to be having some special guests talking about how we can, uh, help each other over there, because there are a lot of people right now, uh, uh, very afraid, upset, even the kids, you know, it's getting to affect the children in my community, and I am one of the leader that represent that area, and I'm going to stand for what I can do to help my community over there, so on March the second weekend, March, uh, probably be on a Tuesday, I will be going on the radio, and I will be putting it in the paper, because we need to come together in my community.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Anyone else?
Thomas.
Thomas, Thomas, it's been a long day. All right, any other comments? Announcements? Okay, I would like to.
First, I just want to announce that in G W C Home on Margaret King Street, and, um, Canard right now, uh, is putting together Margrove, uh, from three to six, the band of our team, uh, tomorrow, please feel free to come out, uh, in the G W C Home on Margaret King Street, uh, we'll be, uh, protected, we'll be, uh, officer there, so, uh, it's going to be a fun date tomorrow from three to six.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Also, I would like to recognize the Edward basketball team, who made it to the substate, if you would, please, Mr. Bowie.
Don't label.
Okay, if you would, please grab the mic and tell us your name. Also, we would be inviting Selma High and Morgan Academy at, uh, next council meeting, uh, to come forward and recognize.
Please come around, come around.
My name is Canard Walker, and.
What grade, what grade?
Oh, eleventh grade, and I'm sixteen years old.
My name is Garrett Crowe, I'm in two grade, eighteen years old.
You said Garrett Crowe?
My name is Sean King, I'm in ninth grade, I'm fourteen.
My name is Ode Lee, I'm in the Latin grade, I'm sixteen.
My name is Justin Newford, I'm in eleventh grade, I'm seventeen.
My name is Cameron Prince, I'm in eleventh grade, I'm sixteen.
My name is Joseph Hall, I'm seventeen. I'm in the Latin grade.
Well, Councilmembers, I hope that we could provide a meal for, you know, Edward, Morgan Academy, and, uh, Selma High, for the recognition, the accomplishment during this basketball season, and I know we're hoping to get with Mr. Canard and Randolph, I talked with them on last week, upon the, uh, G W C Homes basketball, so hopefully, we can just come together and provide a meal for all through the streets. All through the streets. Uh, Councilwoman Yagla, this is the.
It is, congratulations, Eagles, I'm proud of y'all, and I would want to, y'all will be back next year, is that right? So that's good, next year, ooh, y'all will be even better, but I'm very proud of y'all, um, Eagles have always had a good basketball team, in fact, two years ago, I was the honorary coach for the ladies basketball team, with my wonderful two inch vertical leg. I'm very proud of y'all, and I do follow y'all, and, uh, just, congratulations, well done, and stay in school, study hard, and degrade, great ones.
Everybody's glad Councilwoman LaShaw wasn't on court, he'll mean point God, so, he wants to give y'all a break, so that's why I probably ain't got to do it. I mean, thank you, and we would definitely be getting with, uh, Reverend Crom to go down on the water. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for talking.
I slipped a coat of shoes. Now to the citizen's requests, we're going to ask you, if you would, to say between the five minutes, five minutes, first, um, for the citizen's request, we have Mr. Stephen Brooks, gas tax.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to do something most teachers don't do, I'm going to pass out some recommendations first, and I will pull your name out of your pecking iron while I'm talking. Once again, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Brooks, I'm a resident of Selma, Alabama, six hundred Alves Avenue, Ward Three. As resident of Selma, I am opposed to the proposed gas tax increase and the twenty-five million dollar bond proposal. The impact of five cents a gallon may not seem to be a lot, however, to the poor of Selma who are struggling, it is. The impact to Selma's struggling business community, it's not a stretch. The bi-local movement will be impacted. Consumers will bypass in-city stations and make their purchases out of town. This will also impact impulse counter-buying, thus a loss of additional sales tax. I have the experience of owning and running a successful retail business, I lost count of the times customers would say, I came by yesterday, found no parking space, so I drove to Big Box four miles away, yet there were plenty of spaces half a block down. The customer will drive to the cheaper gas station. Then we have the twenty-five million dollar bond issue which comes up. There's been little explanation so far, other than it's for infrastructure. This issue is one in which requires the city residents to vote yea or nay. The problems with this proposed city gas tax increase have been brought to you at several meetings, including the language of the ordinance itself, some of which has been explained, but I don't see the words earmarked in there, I see percentages that were explained, but they were legally explained by an attorney, and who the next attorney is can change the explanation. Solutions and other plans have been asked for by council members. I offer the following: When Carol and I ran our retail business, there were times when I would get excited over a new product line or display, Carol, the finance officer, would bring me back to reality. "We can't afford to do that at this time," she would say. Then together, we would review our open to buy, after a clear and transparent financial discussion, a decision could and would be made. That is what I am asking you to do. Check over these recommendations, know the clear, transparent, documented financial position of the city prior to any tax increase. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for considering these recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Any questions? Councilwoman Johnson.
No, just a statement, thank you, Mr. Brooks, um, oftentimes I look out and see you, and your wife, and many others from Ward Three, that, um, have an interest in city government, and a passion for what we do up here, thank you for your support, thank you for your recommendations, and, and thank you for continuing to live in this great city, we appreciate you, because we realize they're not locks on the doors, and they're not locks on the, um, exits, and you can leave at any time that you choose to stay here with us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Next, we have Mr. Walker McGee, and Summer Studdard, City Warden.
Good evening, City Councilmember, good evening. President Bowie, another city official, good evening, citizens. My name is Walker McGee, this is Summer Studdard, and we're planning a city warden, you have a date set for March sixteenth? Um, how this project kind of came into fruition, I was at Block Park walking early in the morning, and I saw trash everywhere, I saw a couch by the dumpster, um, so I was kind of mad about it, I went to work talking about it, and then one of my coworkers, which is one of the team leaders we assigned, he kind of hooked me and Lady Walker up, and she kind of had more concrete ideas than I did, so we kind of got together and talked about some things. Um, so our vision for this project is basically to have, it's a community Selma project, so we want all wards to be a part of, we have four team leaders, which is myself, uh, Lady Walker, uh, Mark Miles, and Derek Moore, and we each assign ourselves two wards, um, to focus on, so we want to challenge the council members and other city officials to be a part of this, to just show up in their ward, you know, during the cleanup, just to be, you know, in or out, and even if you can't participate, to donate, uh, we have tech ho on board, and they're going to do free hot dogs and chips, uh, we're just really looking for donations with, um, water, drinks, garbage bags, gloves, if you can't participate, but we do want the council members and other, and not just y'all, because we're going to put those out in courthouse and everywhere, but to, if you can't participate, to donate something, um, and just let your community know that you're there, and let your ward know that you're here, you know, even if you just sit for thirty minutes, just come out there, um, so. So I have Ward Seven and Six, um, Lady Walker has Ward Eight and Five, Mark Miles has Ward Four and Two, and Derek Moore has Ward Three and One, um, so our plans are action, we want to canvass all wards with flyers ahead of time, so even if community members can't be a part of it, they can bag their trash and at least sit it on the road so we can get it, uh, we want to take flyers to schools, radio stations, courthouse, um, local businesses, any place we can kind of get the word out, um, and really things we need donated, water, drinks, garbage bags, and this, and it's kind of, it, it's kind of simple, it's simple, we just want to clean, beautify the cities, give people a sense of ownership, I mean, everybody stays, we can't just point things and say this side is this and this side is that, but for everybody to get involved in, and beautifying the city, so.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, I like what you said, ladies, um, I, I'm the rep, beautification of the city of Selma, each ward, uh, each council people up here, we've been out, I've been out for many years, out in the city cleaning up, and in Ward Seven, I, uh, supply, I'm, I, I go to the conventions, and I pick up supplies, and I bring out to everybody in Ward Seven, we're probably clean, we're one of the most cleanest area right now, because communication with your constituents that live for your ward, we, we know what we have to do, we bag, they get their bags, we get out, we pick up, we have, uh, bootcamps, we, we do cleanups all the time, and, um, I understand that you said you would like to have bags, and, um, right now, you know, the equipment that I have, that I use, I use it in my wards, because, um, I start letting other people, you know, use it, but I never got them returned back to me, because I do cleanups all the time, and, um, I will support you guys, what you're doing, but, uh, the supply that you're asking for right now, for bags, I'm down to my last two cases, which, uh, I'm going to be, uh, doing a cleanup coming up, that I have to use, in March, uh, I'm supposed to go to clinic, and, uh, it's based on depend on, uh, they give me for my use for my councils, each ward that wants to have a cleanup, but I, since you guys, uh, wanted to do this for the city of Selma, I, I'm always around to, I will give you some of the supplies when I get them, but I would like to have my pickup sticks back. Uh, I will let you use the pickup sticks, I would like to have them back, but I will try my best to, to, to supply you, I will try my best to supply, supply you with the trash bags, and, uh, some of the gloves.
And that would just be for your ward, see, we're only sending this to Facebook, uh, once we do flyers in different locations and open a donation for the community, so even if they can't be a part of the ward cleanups, they can at least donate items, so, yeah.
But the reason why I'm telling you, young ladies, is, uh, we have, uh, when you do a cleanup in the city, uh, it's important that the city be represented, you, when you come from, we come from different states of the city of Alabama, and when we do cleanups, we turn in reports, and we take pictures of our area that we do cleanup in, so, we want to be a part of this, and I'm glad that you came out, and, uh, I'll be willing to, uh, take you through with my ward, uh, and, uh, work with you, but, uh, we clean up all the day, thank you.
Thank y'all so much, um, I, I appreciate it, every single hand that can touch some trash, and pick it up and put it in a trash bag, is having, appreciated, so let me know what you need, um, I think I have gloves, gloves for my last one, whatever, just let, let me know, what, Rowan, what you want me to say, I think you said water. I think you said water, drinks, trash bags. Did I get it all?
Yes, and gloves.
And gloves, water, drink, trash bags, and gloves, um. Lenny wants to know how to contact me. She knows how to get in contact with me. Uh, Ward Four, Mark Miles, I know Mark, so let's, let's get done.
Yeah, and we want to make this a continuous thing, not just March sixteenth, but maybe every two months, every month, anything to kind of get the community together because it's so divided by wards. But to get the community together and take care of the city, so.
Let me thank you, Mr. McGee, and also Ms. Studdard. And I can help with this endeavor, I definitely will. I would also donate some flyers, bags, and gloves because I was a no word of course.
Councilman Johnson, any councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, I'm glad you, you live my ward enough, so I'm glad that you... But that's why I thank you for that. Um, I would owe my doors to be the checkpoint, to do the hot dogs, the, uh, water, even music, um, potato chips, even bags. And I'm going to get out and help as well. But we can have that area, the designated area between, you know, Ward Eight to Ward Eight, that where they want to come in and stop, at a stopping point, to get some water or what they need to do. We'll do that. I'll open doors to do that. Plus, like I said again, I would try to get some guys together, some trucks and stuff to Ward Eight. Well, we're going to have trucks. I know on Facebook you say you need trucks and things. Someone's going to help to supply that as well. Uh, so we're going to do all we can and definitely those hot dogs that we get. But I'm trying to get the city first to get some of the major area that we don't even try to get. I'm definitely going to need a, a team to help with that. So, but, uh, it's definitely, I, I thank you. I saw it on Facebook. I want to help all our teams as well. But also, we have the water, I would do the hot dogs, I would do music, I would do potato chips, and I would do the bags in Ward Eight. I would take care of that. Thank you, just what I've done here. I appreciate you. Hit my information.
Councilwoman Johnson, any councilwoman?
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate you, um, taking on this initiative. I want to make you all aware that that weekend, we will be having Selma Historic Annual Pilgrimage. And so I definitely would like to coordinate with you, you guys, to ensure that the area is cleaned. As I mentioned before, we'll actually be cleaning the week before. Um, but I don't mind coming to another area, um, or to, uh, to come back through our area to ensure that things are decent and in order when we have our visitors. If you don't mind taking out my number, um, Mr. Daryl Stewart has, um, texted me since I've been sitting up here and made me aware. He's diligent in assisting me in providing large trucks and other machinery to ensure that we can do the things. And he's stayed, stated and placed his support to you, you all's efforts. So, um, three, three, four, two, six, seven, ninety-seven, thirty-seven. If you please call me, I would definitely like to coordinate with Mr. Moore and help you out as much as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Do we actually know who will be dumping the trash out there in September?
Forty-one.
Okay. In the garbage can, you pick up, you got to take it to forty-one.
Councilwoman Yama?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies, this is, I, thank you. This is just God sent. Um, I will represent Ward Two and I'd like to get with Mr. Miles and see if we could, if we could move the data. I have a cleanup planned actually for the weekend prior to that, for Ward Two cleanup. Um, because of the pilgrimages coming in out. And I have some of the corridors that come into Selma. And, and we want it to be nice and playful company. So, and it'll be between the jubilee and, um, the pilgrimage. So I would like to talk, would that be okay with you all? I don't want, I love the idea of a coordinated cleanup Selma weekend. And I think that's fabulous. And I don't want monkey with your, your plans. But I would wonder if, if I could, and I'll give you my number.
Any old idea of this, this cleaning of the city of Selma?
Sure, and I think that's wonderful, wonderful. Okay, my number is three, three, four, four, one, nine, zero, six, five, six. And I have a plan made up here on Thursday, on Thursday the seventh, at five o'clock, up here to plan. I'm going to have, um, the ward residents up here so that we can plan our cleanup. I've got to get the word out. But if I could talk with Mr. Miles before, and anybody that wants to come in, we'll have, you know, bags and things and, and, um, chips and snacks and water and all the co-tribs for a good effective cleanup. And thank y'all again for doing this. That's where you're shield. Thanks.
Councilwoman, um...
You asked about dumping the trash. Um, the mayor, if you... Yeah, but I have a question for the mayor. Um, you know, when we're having citywide cleanup, sometimes we can put the big dumpsters out. And at checkpoints, you take the trash that you have thankfully have picked up, you put them in the dumpster and the city takes them out to where they belong. Uh, and that's, picking up the trash, you're going to find, when you get out, if you don't know already, it's going to be tons of it. Like, you're going to make like a million trips down to forty-one. That's why I said, if you don't already know. So mayor, can we help out with this endeavor on this particular day and, and, and other days? Can we put out the big dumpsters like we do when, when there are citywide cleanups?
Let me do it.
So at checkpoints, they can just dump?
Let me get with, um, Steve Hendricks and see if that, that do it.
Okay, and then you can get a contact number for, uh, the mayor and your mayor follow, follow to see if that can happen. We just present him, uh, for, we want him present as well. Mayor, they want your presence, citizen, city council?
She just, she just, she just talked to me, gave me that, yes.
He has his.
I'm just hoping I'll give you my contact numbers. Since you're the point person for Ward, uh, Six. Uh, it's three, three, four, three, four, nine, one, nine, zero, zero. I look forward to this. Since you guys have already met around the city, so you know what you're in for.
Yeah, we know.
We're in for a nightmare. And I want to commend you and thank you for the effort because it is needed. And I'm hoping what this, uh, once this take place, citizens began to take on some responsibility and stop being so, trying to be nice a bit.
Trash.
Being so trashy. So I just want to thank you ladies for all that you do. And, and let's just hope and pray that we have a successful day. And this next God will give us some fine weather so that we could, uh, have a good day on that day.
Well, starting Monday, we're going to start canvassing the city, locking our doors, letting them know to help their block. Get a trash bag, fill it up, because we can refill. So starting Monday, we will be out, we will, everybody in Ward, even I, who I call you. And we'll let go of me, help with everybody on March sixteenth. Everybody go out.
Mr. John Harris? Mr. John Harris? Mr. Sam Moffett?
Good evening, Juan.
Good evening.
And good evening to the audience. And first, let me just, uh, say we're getting ready to celebrate the twenty-seventh annual Bridge Cross Jubilee starting Thursday. And I can say that I, it will be my twenty-sixth annual Bridge Cross Jubilee starting Thursday. First, I want to thank the members of the, uh, council that was on the committee that worked with the Jubilee Committee to help us have hopefully a smooth event this year. We, we reached some agreements that we think was going to help us be productive from both the, the city aspect as well as the Jubilee panelist aspect. And I would like to just go over some of those, those things that we'd agreed upon so we can have them as part of an official record. But I do need to add a couple more things to what we, a couple more requests that we need to throw in there. And, uh, we, we, we met and we agreed that we would have all our entertainment would be at the Selma Amphitheater this year. We have two days of entertainment, Saturday, uh, March second, which is the big festival, goes from eleven AM until seven PM. And then on Sunday, we have a, uh, Gothel concert at, after we cross the bridge and come back to the amphitheater for a short Gothel concert. That's going to be from three thirty PM to six thirty PM. And so, of course, we'll be in, we'll start setting up on Friday. The sound technician will come in Friday evening starting at six o'clock and they will start hooking up our, our sound equipment. We'll have, uh, a guard to guard the equipment. They hook up half of it. Friday night, then they come back out early Saturday morning, finish connecting everything up and start their, start their sound checks and get, get, get the artists their sound check that they want to get. And so, uh, so those, those will be the uses for the, for the amphitheater this weekend. We also talked about our use of the George Evans Building for Saturday, our, our storytelling. We got people that, the, the veterans are coming in and we're going to be recording their stories. We want to do that from ten AM Saturday morning until about five PM Saturday afternoon. We got a, we got a person that's going to be recording their stories during the course of, course of that day. Now, uh, I would like to also request, this year, we're going to be recognizing one class, uh, R B Hudson High School, class of nineteen sixty-four. Class of sixty-four was the first students to really start walking out of school. They walked out spring of, of their senior year then, during the course of the summer and the start of the class of sixty-five, they, they, they did the bulk of the marching. But class of sixty-four was the first students to actually start walking out of school. And so we're going to be recognizing them on Sunday at the Gothel concert, uh, Sunday afternoon, uh, as part of the Gothel concert. We would like to be able to interview some of them Sunday during the course of the afternoon at, at Evans Building if, if that's possible, from, from, maybe from noon to four. But just, most of those classes, most of them are just coming for Sunday. They're not going to be here for the whole weekend. A lot of them are just coming back in for Sunday, the March and noon and be recognized as part of class of sixty-four. That was something we had initially agreed to, so that's something that I wanted to, to present and see if that's possible. We're going to have it already used Saturday. I want to know if we could also go back and use it for a few hours on Sunday for the, for the, for the Evans Building. We're going to rent the, uh, Convention Center for our annual Freedom Play Award banquet. And we've already given the deposit for the rental on that. But we do need to be able to go in there on Friday about one PM to start decorating. In the past, we've gone from one to four on Friday to start decorating. Then we come back Saturday afternoon about four, complete the decoration before the event starts at seven, Saturday evening. So we would like still be able to go in there and, uh, do that with the same, the same thing that we're doing in the past, uh, having set up and start decorating at one o'clock Friday afternoon. There was, there's one building that I just became aware of, nineteen Washington Street, as, as a city facility. And I would like to have access to that if possible. I don't know what, I, I didn't know what the rental was. When I, when I inquired about it back last summer, they said it wasn't, it wasn't being rented at that time. They never told me if I could actually rent it or not. But I would like to have access to that building if that's, if that building is available.
It's one billion. It's, it's available.
Okay, it's one fifty per, per day?
Yeah.
Okay. So we probably need that Friday, Saturday. But I do get it, so if, if, like, we can, we, we, we...
But I was going to say available on Saturday. You know, I said it's available. It's available now for renting, whether someone's on the book or not.
No, 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 no one's on the book. Yeah, she told me no one's on the book. Yeah, right, right, right. I don't want this one. Okay, so we'll go forth with, with, play, do the rental contract on that building.
Yeah, it's only, it's planned. So at first, they were not available because we had, um, we had a delay off. And then the council, uh, voted to, uh, uh, adjust the contract. So in that contract, you'll see some new responsibilities concerning security and everything. You'll see some new responsibilities for the renter. And you'll see another responsibility for cleaning and setup also for the renter that used to be on the city side. So that's the difference in the contract tracking you'll see. Uh, and that's why it's available now.
We're going to use it primarily for our headquarters, for our vendors, for them to check in and be able to, uh, work that direction from the committee, okay?
Councilwoman.
Okay, um, first I'll address the needing of the amphitheater and the Evans Building. And share that committee, what we agreed on and what the council approved by majority vote, was that you were allowed access, um, to everything from Water Avenue, from Broad to Lawrence, including the amphitheater and the Evans Building. Now, we didn't all, as a, um, matter of voting, that was the recommendation from the committee. Um, everyone didn't vote for it, but it is passed with the majority vote. Um, and I think the president, who's also on that committee, stated that the Evans Building would be used for educational purposes. And that's why we were going to partner with you all on that matter.
That's, that's going to be part of the...
And the amphitheater. So your request to, um, have those built in any additional time, we, we've already approved that you would have the amphitheater and the Evans Building from Friday till Sunday. And if you need it in additional time, you will have to rent it.
That's, that's fine.
Nineteen Washington Street was not included.
Right, right.
And we, we never discussed that. So that would have to be, uh, something that you would rent in addition to the Convention Center. You would have to go through whatever policies were originally agreed on and work that out with the, the rental office, Ms. Davis or the mayor's office. Also, I don't think we have that new contract ready yet. So I'm not sure, um, I know we discussed it a little bit yesterday, but it's, it's not finished and we haven't voted on it. So I don't know.
It's not finished?
He said, he said last night that he was going to...
He's working on it. We would now have another council...
He's working on removing that statement from the contract?
He was told.
He's redoing the contract.
Also too, Mr. Walker, you said that your vendors would be there at the nineteen Washington?
They, that's where they're going to check in to. They'll check in, they'll check in there at, at, at the, the, uh, coordinator is going to start assigning supplies at midnight Friday night. He'll, they'll just come there to get their assignment from him at that location. That's going to be where I enter and to the vessel is going to be right there by that building.
Mayor, should our tax and license people also be located there to get our business fee?
From, from my understanding, um, some of the vendors have already begun, um, paying, which last year, Mr. Walker can say it worked out better when vendors do upfront that they need to pay for the city. So I don't think it'll be an issue. However, the tax collection department will be collecting or checking to make sure they have those, those, um, licenses, so.
Can we set up one, can we build, can we set up?
I don't think it'll be an issue with us doing that.
That's a centralized location for me.
But now, if y'all would share, would, did y'all want to share the couch? We got to pay for the test here.
There was couch movement.
Uh, just one. Just one question. Now, you mentioned that, that Venture Center that y'all may need to use the fire. Is that, is it available?
Start decorating, probably. I don't want to know if it's available. Yes, right, that's what we've always done in the past.
Nobody booked that.
Nobody, but we haven't booked it, said, we already picked it up.
No, nobody else.
Nobody, right, right. She says, baby, we're going to use the fire instead of that.
The business hour.
Ms. Davis, right, yeah, during the business hour, so she's stopping her poets on Friday.
Councilwoman Johnson allows the organization exclusive use to the Washington Street building. With, with the condition that, you know, with the condition that they allow city personnel also occupied that building to ensure that whatever vendor's fee is collected and to be a part of, um, coming out and giving, giving direction as to making sure that this, uh, that this event become, be, be successful. So I'd just like to make a motion that since we're going to, um, accommodate this, that, that Washington Street building be a part of the package.
Also too, Mayor, can RDS be set up now also?
Well, so we'll, I'm coming.
Okay.
That's my mistake. I'm sending you a pageant.
Right.
Two hundred and seven. I have a motion on the floor for them to, uh, get it to nineteen...
Can we, uh, to be able to use the Venture Center and fire to decorate and then also for the...
But they'll be paying for it.
You mean for the...
No, no, uh, the fire, I think they just want to come in and...
You, you get, they give you a day to set up.
Yeah.
As part of your package, as part of your rental thing.
It's like a wedding.
Right, so can we just, can we include that with it? So how many hours they normally get just that?
Three hours from one to four on Friday. You got, you would stop at, at, at the, the business hour, but you'd have somebody from the city that was there. So it could, because I didn't come back on Saturday, but they, they...
You want to add that to your motion?
Absolutely. This council will, we will be as helpful and accommodating for this event as, as we can be. So that's part of our motion.
I see.
And by the past, with the tax and licenses, did they usually go down on Saturday and just stick it?
They would, they would go around and they'll go to each vendor and actually check to make sure they're paid. That's normally how they do it, for a good portion of the day. Right, and they would, which like some of them, so they ain't made no money yet, but came to come back a couple hours a day. So they've been very, you know, very helpful. We, it was real smooth last year. It was, it was, it was smooth last year. We didn't, we didn't, anybody, you know, complaining. Everybody, nobody in advance had to pay in. And so people, people paying that, and they had a real, you know, high success rate of collecting from all, just about all of them.
Okay, um, would it be okay, Mayor, with tax and licenses, because it's a common thing?
President, we're gonna have some vendors around that area, too. On our range, we're gonna be, they will be checking.
Both, yeah.
They don't have.
No, but I'm saying, you, you got something that'd be way on two streets over.
Oh, I was gonna ask you too, Mayor. It should be in a centralized location for vendors, just along Ward Avenue.
Right. Normally, Mr. Walker can attest that normally anybody who's not a part of the jubilee event, we set them down.
Good.
Now, of course, you got local businesses that school have businesses downtown. We can't prevent them from going into their business. But anybody who's not a part of their event, we can be closed down.
Good. Well, most of the councilmen and the mayor, uh, most of the people who are in council are.
Washington Street, uh, the organization, the organization have exclusive access to it, providing that they allow city officials to be a part of, to be a part of the standing ground to ensure that the vendor's fee is collected. So, that's.
With the additional three hours for the convention center?
The convention, three hours, set up the convention center.
Set up the three hours for the convention center.
We have a second round, council, council. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Are we saying exclusive? You're saying that they would not be required to pay the hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred dollars? Because the committee gave the recommendation, we're giving, giving, partnering, allowing them to have at no cost amphitheater, which is what, three thousand dollars?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, and for the two days, three thousand dollars. And then again, the Evans Building, which is only weekend, seven hundred dollars. So, that's approximately a thousand or fourteen hundred, because I think it's like three hundred on one day, seven hundred on the other. And so, I think we're partners, we're being great partners in this. And so, I would respectfully request that they pay the three hundred dollars. It's not even ten percent of the three thousand dollars. And I think we've been great partners. And of course, there are additional fees that have been taken on, and we have all donated in this area, but this is not a large amount. And when he came before us, he was willing to pay.
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't, that was gonna be part of it, when I was willing to pay it. I would pay for myself.
Well, we're partners.
Let's do this then. I spent, I paid one day. I paid one fifty, if y'all can, which seems like a fair compromise.
Let's ask about this. If you want a fair compromise, let us pay, let us allow you to have amphitheater one day, and then you pay one day.
You said you'd be willing to pay?
Yeah, I'm willing to pay the one day, the one year. We'd be willing to pay one year. Go ahead and get the contract tomorrow, and then I'll pay tomorrow.
That's fine, that's a compromise.
Okay.
The band, yes. All right. Bro, call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin?
No.
Councilwoman Youngler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShawna?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
One last comment, first, the mayor wasn't there when I was thanking the council for their participation and cooperation. So, I do wanna thank Mayor for his cooperation and the city's cooperation with our administration. And the final thing is that, one of the things that, one of the main statements that we're making this weekend is we're gonna, we're telling everybody at Congress to say that it's time to do something for Sally. And so, we wanna, we wanna drive that point home real strong throughout the weekend, so I want other folks to be able to say that same thing, that it's time to do something for Sally. Okay, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you for having me. What's that?
Same.
Same. Call me, Councilman, right now.
Somebody's calling you on the camera.
Next, there must be a round. Update on Paul.
Very easy.
This is my third time coming before the council to ask, or to talk about the park across the street from RB Hudson Middle School. It saddens me to have to come that many times to ask about a project that's modeled, or managed, if we were trying to deal a guilty person. I asked Ms. Addie some questions, but she said she didn't get the paper that I sent. Then she turned around and said it was not on the right paper. So, there's no truth in our lies. There's no lack in the truth. No matter how you put, we all are wrong, and we all need to be honest with each other. You need to be able to look in the mirror and begin to smile, because how can you when you are telling the public a bunch of lies? And that's what's going on, a bunch of lies. Somebody's question, Mr. Johnson, they did answer us and answered them from the other day. Um, I was asking how much money was spent since April two thousand eighteen, April two thousand eighteen I came here, and it was like seventy-five thousand of over five hundred fifty was used for electrical service. Has any more money been given to Mr. Johnson?
Uh, listen, I would, I think it's just maybe less than ten thousand, rather than ten thousand, when we built the concrete up. Uh, right now, the park should be open running hopefully in a few months. Uh, we got some contractors, we had Joe on, uh, in the process of doing it, but we couldn't ever get together with it. Like I said before, we have a meeting back in me, Addie, uh, at that particular time with Turney Nine, Mr. Thompson, uh, Mr. Alvarez.
Wilson and me. Uh, Wilson's there, I think, about three or four, three or four months.
Johnson.
At Turney Nine, okay. Ray Holmes, right. So, the park, it is in the process of getting it and get started. Uh, but we got, um, some other guys that came giving me estimates on the contract. Uh, the park should, I promise you, the park should be completed sometime by the summer. Uh, it's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be a lot better than what we got original, uh, for what money we got. Now, again, keep in mind, ten thousand dollars is short of what the Princey all left in the account. Uh, by mistake were made by the treasurer, and uh, ten thousand dollars went in this Thomas account, some account we got. And, uh, well, now, okay, let me put it something. There was ten thousand dollars taken out of my account and put into Mr. Thomas's account. And, uh, and that's what I was told by the treasurer. Now, again, this has been recorded, and I hope it is, because like I say again, because that was told to me. Uh, so right now, that, uh, they took ten thousand dollars out of their split account for the park and was put into Mr. Thomas's account, and I said they could not bring it back, you know?
Excuse me, you're saying you want that stake of the record?
No doubt, that was told to me, because I took it out. Yes, I wanna be stated that I was told that ten thousand dollars that was left in this, my account, that was transferred to my account, was mistakenly taken out of my account and put into Mr. Thomas's account. I was also told they called the league, and the league said that since they put it into Mr. Thomas's account, that it cannot be put back into my account. So, and I didn't, I didn't understand that, but, uh, that was told to me. So, if there's any kind of way, uh, some money's been short, if that's what was opened out. Again, I don't know, I know you, this ain't the first time you urged me to tell them, but, uh, but again, uh, we will get to that. But in other words, uh, I do have enough on to finish up what needs to be done to finish the park.
Councilman Johnson, can you put in writing some of the questions?
Now, she gave me the question. I would answer everything she can, because I've never at all by research, where I can, yes, I do that, because whatever Ms. Howard need to know, I feel I can get it for her. Now, I have a conversation.
And the courses, if you wanna make a part of the management, you can.
Right.
Okay, my next question, I want to know, I want to get all the receipts from the funds that was spent on that park. They gave me the receipt the last time on the electrical. I want all receipts. Okay, I was told that the first man, the second man that we were talking about, we designed the paperwork, we're putting it in the dozen, all that. When I talked to him, see, that's not the truth, so let's go on. Uh, I was told that Cooper Brothers, somebody named Reed, and somebody else, gonna do the park now. I was also told Cooper Brothers went out of business in twenty sixteen. So, I don't know. I just need to know the truth. We don't need to be running behind a lie after lie after lie. We need the park built. That's the only thing we're saying in the board setting. Build the park. Give Ms. Thomas the money, so we can build a park or have the park built. What is wrong with giving the right person the money? The money had no business on it to your hands, Mr. Johnson. I know at that time.
That's good, brother.
Okay, I know y'all have done an ordinance now, that, you know, you're not gonna do it.
That would intend to come to Michael Johnson. Oh, I didn't ask for that money. Uh, this, this Princey asked me and reached out to Ms. Thomas. She was the new councilperson award. Ms. Thomas may never made it out before, or at least I don't know, to go and get the talk from the Princey, or get that money to move into her account. She asked me, said, Michael, I didn't know the money was in my account. I transferred the money to your account to complete this park for me. I went to Ms. Thomas myself and asked you to go see Ms. Princey. She doing the same thing now? That's what she told me then. So, of course, I am gonna finish the park for Ms. Princey, because it'll be a beautiful park, just like the young man came from saying about the kids in nineteen sixty-four and sixty-five. That's what the park is all about, about the kids that left, uh, with RB Hudson at that particular time. It gonna be a beautiful park. Uh, but like I said again, I got some guys I'm talking to, gonna redo the park, because what happened at the time when parks were started, I have no idea. Uh, it's some kind of way, some draw between the first guy and the Princey. I got a lot to be dealing with myself. I have no problem with trying to deal with this. And this park will be completed by the summer. It'll be a beautiful park when we get through it. And again, uh, I understand your frustration. I understand, totally understand. But I promise you, that park will be completed. It take time, it take contract. The contract, we're trying to give this arm to a contract, and if the thing we're doing, it wasn't, it wasn't going like the mayor was telling us, we need to keep from being sued and all blase, blase. So, in other words, we, we, we miss the man and have to be insured, have to be bonded and all that stuff. So, but anyway, we got the right, uh, people now. We give it and move forward, give it and take care of it.
Did y'all bid the contract out?
Well, that's what we're doing. We have to get it bided out. And what are we doing this? What we have to do, we have to post in the newspaper, so we getting all that stuff taken care of as we talking. And, uh, well, we're gonna have all that taken care of.
Well, if it was bided out, how did Cooper Brothers get?
Cooper Brothers ain't never, I don't know where Cooper Brothers come from.
Who told you?
I never told you that. I never, I didn't, never told Ms. Howard. Never told Cooper Brothers. Never. I promise you, I never told Cooper Brothers.
Okay, before I go to Councilwoman Thomas, Ms. Howard, would it be a problem if you just get to remain in the course and, and also give Ms. Harris a copy, make a part of it?
Rest me to my voice.
Sure.
Ms. Howard, good afternoon again. I just wanna say for the record that when you and I spoke, uh, earlier, you asked me about your name not appearing on the agenda to speak, and you said that you had submitted that also, and I explained to you that I did not get that, but that I did get your email requesting those other questions that you were speaking to Mr. Johnson about. But I also mentioned to you that you needed to do that in the form of our request for information. So, let the record reflect that I did not tell you that I did not receive it and then did receive it. I did not get the work session request, as I stated, but I did get those other questions, but you'll have to submit those to me in writing on the request of information form. I just want the record to reflect that.
Okay, and I want the record to reflect that I sent both of them to you, and you told me I put it on the prom form.
Okay.
Or leave it like that.
All right, and then we're gonna move on, Councilwoman Thompson, and we'll move on.
I like to put, set the record straight. When I got elected in twenty seventeen of November, when I came in, I made sure I have copies of the record, where when I came in, there was a hundred thousand dollars came, was transferred to Ward Eight to carry out Ms. Princey's project. Now, the ten thousand dollars that Mr. Johnson is talking about, I can tell you about that. Uh, it was ten thousand dollars that came back from something that Ms. Princey had did. Ms. Wade called me. She said, Councilwoman Thomas, do you want this money? I say, Ms. Wade, I'm gonna tell you like this. I wasn't, this, this former councilperson left the office and gave a hundred thousand dollars to Councilman Johnson to carry out her project. I say, I don't wanna get in the, in the, uh, in the middle of this. And Ms. Wade said, well, I called the league, and the league said, no. If she's not in that seat at that present time, you're supposed to put that ten thousand dollar into Ward Seven. So, I wanted to get that straight, that Ms. Wade did not take anything from, from Mr. Johnson. There was a ten thousand dollar came up about something, and she wanted to know, to find out from the league which way to go with it. And I told her, I said, well, she gave it to Michael Johnson before I came in, and the money was already in there. And, uh, so I want people to know, it never was in Ward Seven. It was always, it was already given before I came into the seat. Prior to the time when I was, was running, there was approximately two hundred forty-three thousand in Ward Seven. Eighty thousand and some, a hundred thousand dollars went in the junkyard. The other forty-seven thousand went in my Ward Turney Nine house. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Thomas know what happened. And the other hundred thousand went to, to carry out, that project was up before Ms. Princey left, and she put it in Johnson's hand to carry out her orders. So, I'm not, you know, it don't bother me, because you know why? Um, it was not in my hand in the first beginning. So, we gonna, we gonna leave that alone. It's his money, and he's the one that you need to talk to back.
Let's put it on hands now. Let's make your hands thing up.
So, y'all gonna wash y'all hands?
That's right. No money was put in my hand, period.
Not yet in your hand.
I hadn't seen no money, period. Matter of fact, every dime that we count was down in the financial.
Well, it was transferred toward Seven, toward Eight.
Okay.
It was transferred to you.
Okay, every dime that was spent on that park is, is down for me to die.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It was transferred to your ward to carry out.
Right, well, so you all the way up with the ten thousand dollars, so that's it. I'm just saying.
That's right.
We good, we good, okay, okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Howard.
I was, I could say that I was trying to get some information out to the state, and they're gonna look at it. And they did ask me to come up to you tonight and give it one more chance. I mean, because we've been Mike, annoying each other for a long time. The only thing I'm saying is, we must know the truth. We must tell the truth.
Right, right.
We must tell the truth. As a mayor, we must tell the truth. Everybody must tell the truth, and we ought to move some of forward. We're dancing backwards. Why, why, why? Because people are feeling to do their job.
There you go.
Feeling to do their job. And the last question I had was, when would the concession stand be started? Because it starts in January, and in February, that's when it's open. Now, it's March now. I understand Sean Van Dalla is over the rec center again now, so I just wanna know, because I'm a little bit.
Okay.
Councilman Johnson, you would be having a recreation meeting?
Coming, really. So, I'm just trying to get together with my committee members, along with the mayor, and I understand it came down last week or this week. I've never called a meeting, and I said, once we get together with everybody, then I will set a date, and I believe that the date two weeks ahead, for everybody to know that we having a, a recreation meeting. But right now, I haven't set a date yet. I'm still trying to get the mayor to let me know, and my committee, my committee members to be here as well. So, I will let you know on that part. But I will check on that, uh, you said D is on the concession stand. I would do that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you.
Councilwoman. Jackson, make sure.
I just wanna remind Councilman Johnson, I'm on your committee in ten o'clock in the morning, on any weekday. I'm probably in court, so.
No, that'd be, that'd be definitely the time, because I won't miss you about the other, oh, five, something like that.
Right, good.
You gotta be careful to speak with a forked tongue.
All right, turn around, report.
Good evening again, council.
Good evening.
I just learned, uh, prior to coming up, I spoke with Pro Bay Judge Jim Dunn. There was, uh, a position on the Craig Airport Force, Craig Airport, um, board that need to be replaced. A position that is shared by both the mayor and the Pro Bay who used to appoint those positions. Um, we came to an agreement to appoint, uh, former Senator Hank Sanders on the Craig, uh, Bureau of Airport Industrial Board. And he just let me know the county affirmed that last night. I don't have the documentation with me since I just spoke with him, but I would love for the county, the council to, um, stand with me. Agreement that we were agreed to, to, uh, support Senator Sanders being on that board at Craig Field.
Do we have a motion on that? Do we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Jones?
Second.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Johnson. Then follow the discussion, questions?
President Bulley. Councilwoman Bulley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yankel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Uh, I learned also prior to coming in, I thought with Chief Stevenson, that the council already has taken up the issue with the, the three fire investigators. So, um, that's for my sake. I, we can move forward with the many necessary things.
Now, for the correspondence. As long as we're meeting.
Okay, we'll def, we'll definitely do that. Um, tonight, I promise, well, I know tonight, um, you all will be taking up a heavy measure that I don't take lightly. It is a difficult, um, vote to ask any of you who serve on this council, um, to make such a difficult vote. Yet, we find ourselves in a difficult situation in our city. You've driven up and down the roads and streets in Selma. And you've seen what I've seen. You've seen the decaying of our streets and our sidewalks. And you heard from Peak Insurance about the claims that we are yet haven't come in. On a daily basis, we are getting these phone calls. We've asked you to, to take a tough vote on the gasoline tax. That conversation is going not just in the state, it's going federal. It's on all levels of government, city, state, and federal levels. Governor Ivey is very upfront with us that they're looking at a twelve cent gasoline tax. I know that it's a difficult vote for the legislature. However, when you look at the breakdown of those numbers, eight cents will go to the state, three to the county, one to cities, which again, is not sufficient enough for us to address our aging infrastructure. Selma been the second oldest city in this state. Second oldest city in the state. Um, have one of the oldest infrastructures inside of the state of Alabama. We often consider Selma as the queen city of the black belt. Well, the queen has a lot of dents in her crown. And it's up to us, we've been elected to make these tough decisions. Why it's mayor, I can't do this alone. Uh, my job is to, to, to bring the problems before you all and to provide solutions. I found one solution and there's others, let's have that conversation. But my, my concern is, while we continue to, to, to wait to make a decision, our streets are yet being worsured. Some wards, we have cave-ins, even now as I speak, there are cave-ins in different wards. And I just hope it's the council's posture tonight, uh, to, to take up that measure or to provide an alternative solution to making sure that our streets are, are in safe traveling conditions. You know, I won't, I won't read the law to you. You all know what the law says about the council being over the street properties, over buildings. So if we're not gonna move in that direction, please give me another solution. Um, I don't have all the answers, but that is the answer that I put on the table. And I'm, I'm here to, to see can we find a common ground to make sure our city streets are, are okay.
Let me say something. I don't know how the council feels. But just like you said, they are Selma's one of the oldest cities. And Ward Eight is the oldest ward. Ward Eight is in horrible shape. Uh, I get calls all the time from the plants, potholes everywhere. It's sad that Clark School is like a roller coaster going down, uh, Lauren Street. I had a call from a gentleman just coming out of the driveway this morning about a pothole. It's just, it is bad. I took time and drove Ward Eight and took pictures. Part of the slides up there, or over the slide, was one of your presentation was from Ward Eight. It's horrible. And when you, when it's raining, you don't know whether the road level or not. That's what a lot of the, the rims is getting bent and tore because of the water spilling up the potholes. Ward Eight in horrible shape. I, I would challenge anyone to go in my ward and see how bad it is in Ward Eight. Again, I don't want to put taxes on nobody. But like you said, and I think I'm in show ball out, bring something else to the table. You know, uh, how long is it gonna take for us to keep on going over, uh, the, um, finance? We get a month's tape, I look at it, I see where we at. I believe in the young ladies downstairs down there. I mean, I, we got to keep on proving and proving and proving where the money at. We got six to eight employees off. I don't have a heart on lady folks off, these gentlemen's off, if we got money. It's sad. You know, I, I got a call the, uh, other day, mayor, uh, about the bathrooms out there at Memorial Stadium. We got two workers and three with Van Dall out there helping them cutting grasses and everything. We did not know anything about, uh, a tennis tournament, which, that's fine. But again, uh, you know, we should have kept the bathroom, but we can't. We can't slave these workers, the three that we had working. But our vote, me and Councilwoman Jackson, we made a way to put a pilot pot out there, I think, for the, for the tournament, for the tennis, because they was already working on it, um, uh, for the baseball tournament we had. They had no idea that there was a tennis tournament. If we knew that, then we probably would have made some, whatever, we did together. But let's get back to the other thing, that I can't speak for my this board, but I'm speaking on behalf of Ward Eight. We got potholes and a cave-in. Out there, serious cave-in, uh, right there on Max. Uh, I think the city came in temporarily did some, but slowly it's coming back in right now, you know. So, but, um, um, I just, you know, we the oldest part of Selma. You got some people living in the new part of Selma. Probably don't know what a pothole look like. But tell me, come on to Ward Eight, I'll show you what a pothole look like. You know, so, but right now, we, we, we need some help and we need right now.
Thank you. Mayor, um, I want to say, I appreciate you bringing this. I appreciate you doing anything that's your own possibilities, um, to try to cure the ills or address the ills that you've inherited. Because if we're all honest with ourselves, if we're honest with each other, we will say and acknowledge that you have inherited a veritable mess. You've inherited aging infrastructure that's been, that's caving in. And I sat right here in this very room and told Mayor Evans, probably about ten years ago, that if we didn't do something about this infrastructure, that we were gonna have, and I'm gonna quote what I said, that I was not really happy to, that we were gonna have, um, tour buses coming in following in streets that caved in and do new gazers. And that's exactly what we're having. And so I have three of them in Ward Two. You wanna talk about some of the newer streets in Selma? Let's talk about some of the newer streets in Selma. I had, not, not too long after this administration took place, I had a cave-in on Oak Street, an Olympic sized swimming pool hole under Oak Street, one of the newer streets. I'm about to have the same issue over on Wilkins Road that I have sent in request after request after request. Um, I have issues on other streets. You know, and as I've said, I have three, at least three areas where I have gazers and, you know, people are going to A and people are getting lawyers, people. And I don't blame them. I mean, I, I get angry too. I, look, let me tell you something. Y'all can look at my backyard. I've got, because of drainage issues and pro, pipe broken. I'm doing not only fill in work. I go around getting people's lips and limbs and stuff and putting them in and filling them in. But we, we have, you know, we have problems. We have people, we all have folks that call and say, every time a monsoon sets in that have rains coming up their doors. I have it in Ward Two, they have sewage backed up in their homes. You know, we have, the streets are bad, but also what we don't see needs repairing too. We need all that. However, the flip side is, you know, when you had first brought this, we didn't know that Governor Ivey was gonna come with this huge gas tax too. We are so stretched here. Part of the mess that we inherited here was not only the infrastructural mess, the, the Lincoln locks that we have to try to do, not that works with, the tinker toys. But we have, um, you know, the, all the financial state trying to, you know, do broad figure to pay copay and catch as catch can. There is an overwhelming feeling that there's a lot of distrust. Nobody in the city government trusts each other. Nobody in the city trusts each other. None, our constituents don't trust us. You know, everybody hates my guts. I mean, no, you know, it's just that, that's the way it is. Everybody's just angry, mad with each other. They feel like we're a bunch of liars. They don't know where our money goes. And I know when I first took office, we had over a million dollars outstanding just in unlinked garbage pickup fees, when that was like seven dollars and fifty cents to do. So, and, and what I'm saying is, those are a lot of things that make sense to people. I don't think we have a clear enough plan at this time, and I know that we feel under the gun to do something right now. There's a sense of urgency because it is urgent. We have emergency situations. But I think we feel desperate to try to get this tax in before the governor does. And we, we have, you brought some real good ideas, but it reminds me a lot of when working on the lottery that Governor Segal wanted to pass. There were just, it was a good premise, but there were too many people that just were not clear on what would happen with it. I think that's where I find myself right now, based on what people are saying. And I just wanna be honest with you. Um, I want to support you. I want us to support each other. Cause I want Selma to be its best. And, and I know that Selma can't be its best unless we're all being our best. Um, unless we're all being honest with each other. Um, and I, I just, I just have to tell you this about, and be honest about how this is all, what's come on my mind. Cause I don't wanna let you all say, you know, something I initially thought that, you know, I could support and I would just tell you why.
Well, actually, this conversation, this started, if you go back and look through your minutes, I started this conversation a year and a half ago, before Governor Ivey began to talk about the gasoline sale tax, the gasoline tax. Um, we were talking about, um, repairing our, our streets, um, side of the city doing comprehensive planning that I initially gave you all package. Um, we added to that package later to include flood and sewage. So the conversation from the mayor office actually going on for over eighteen months. So it's not just a rushing, rushing through real quick. Um, right now, the state legislature has not done it. They may move from twelve to ten cents. Their, their focus is on state roads, not city roads. Um, and so the conversation on Selma is not focusing on Selma, what the state is doing because they're not taking up measures there. So they're taking up measures there for the state. This package that we gave to you, the infrastructure package, includes stormwater and sewer line, which you talk about in your board. So it's not just the repaving of, of streets. It's everything that's up on them as well. If we don't do it now, we are putting the city at great liability. Laws say is, once we acknowledge we have these issues and if things begin to happen, we have to be responsible for that. And I have plenty of cases that here in state law were in the code where people have gone, um, to cities and sue them because the city refused to act on their decayed infrastructure. And I don't want to say of Selma that we are having all these lawsuits because we won't fix our infrastructure. Yes, the council may say, "Well, mayor, we can't do five cents. We don't wanna be the highest in the state." Well, Montgomery says seven cents. Uh, even to take up a three cent measure, it will pull us right where Montgomery is. There's three other cities who's been paying, paying, paying attention to this conversation in the state right now. And they are listening to Selma. They say, "If Selma can do it, we want to do it too." Even for the records, Selma was the first city that introduced the local gasoline tax back in the early nineteen hundreds. We the one with the pioneers to make this happen. And so when we start comparing ourselves to other cities, back then, we didn't compare ourselves to anybody. We had the leadership, the tenacity of the wheel to say, "Selma's gonna lead in this eff, this effort." We've been the queen of the black belt. I think it's time again for us to lead and say, "Selma, we'll be that shining city that's sitting on top of the hill." Cause right now, as Councilman Shaw always points out, we are sitting on a bunch of orange barrels. And that's not the city that we all ran for. That's not the city that we said that we're gonna be committed to making sure that, um, citizens have the best opportunity to, to expand their neighborhoods, to expand retail. This is part of the economic development as well. Because what we do know, if repayment of streets and sidewalks on a constant basis, that's jobs inside of our communities. There's more people working in our communities. There's more tax dollars turning on inside our community. So it's a, it's a whole picture there. It's not just, we're trying to push this through. It's just that we need to do something quick in a hurry. And if we don't do it, I'm not sure what the outcome will be if we don't do it today.
So, Mayor, all of us will be casting the vote to represent our ward.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we started talking about this at each of my ward meetings and I've also delivered some to, uh, homes. I have a survey. I may have given you all a copy. I had a survey that said, um, which are you in favor? Which, which, um, tax increase are you in favor of? Uh, I had gas, I had sales tax, um, several, Avalor, I have, you know, so. Uh, when, anytime we're discussing this amount of money and everybody's gonna pay, and I take that directly to my constituents.
Right.
And so I have a sample that would be representative of the vote that I would be casting. And, uh, and the way I got that sample is I took it to them. We talked about each, um, ward meeting. Uh, I, those who couldn't, some of those who couldn't make it said, "I heard about the survey. I wanna take the survey cause I, I want you to know I don't wanna pay." And, you know, and I, and I want you to know what I'm willing to pay. Um, and, um, a lot of them were like, you know, this is when I started asking, uh, you and the city attorney, or maybe just the city attorney, have we reached our cap on what everybody, some, well, some people up here call the syntax. So have we reached our cap? That's what, remember when I started asking about that? Because some people were saying, you know, "Hey, put the tax on alcohol, tobacco, and whatever." And I think the city attorney came back and said, "We may have been at our cap on that." And, uh, so people were willing, of course, uh, to put an increase right there. Uh, we had differences of opinion in Avalor. It was like almost half and half. But overwhelmingly with the gas tax, it was almost, people in Ward Four said to me, the two gas stations that are across from each other by Wallace College, they will cross the street and give the money to Valley Grand. That's what some of them said to me. So Valley Grand, we have two gas stations.
Right, Exxon and BP.
One is in Ward Four.
Right.
You can step across the street to the other one and you'll be in Valley Grand. The other one is Valley, of course, you know, I'm gas up, it's right down the street from me. I'm gas up at the Selma gas station. But what they were saying to me, some of those who brought me the cars back, what they were saying was, "I'm, I'm not gonna pay this. I'll go to Valley Grand."
Right.
Um, so when I cast this vote, it's gonna be the best representation that I can pass, uh, of a small. Now, it's not a sample of two thousand voters, so it's a small sample. And in class, if you take this sample to your professor, you would get an F. So it's a small sample. It's triple digits, but we have four digits in voters. But it's the sample that's been active, that's been coming to the ward meetings, that call me and say, "Hey, bring me one." So I will be casting a vote that represents that right there. Uh, I've also asked for solutions. And I also, when, uh, we talked in your office, I also, uh, said to you, you know, "Mayor, this may go over there, maybe you take a tour."
Right.
Take a tour through each ward. That's something that I, um, said to you in your office that maybe if you, if there's something that you feel like you need to say, take it to each ward meeting and, and tell the people, go on the tour and talk about, it was not just gas tax that we were talking about when we were down in your office, but several things. And so, uh, yes, if, if this doesn't fly, then we need to come up with something. But know that the vote that I pass will be, uh, the best representation that I can make, uh, concerning Ward Four. And like I said, you know, they trust me with a lot of things, but when it comes to... And like I said, you know, they trust me with a lot of things, but when it comes to this kind of money, I like to take it to them and see what they're about.
And then to add to that, you know, I hear people always talking, we're gonna go elsewhere to get gasoline. I mean, that's the, that's the argument that, you know, I have somewhere else. If gas go before dollars a gallon right now, guess what, those same people gonna drive to the gas pump and fill their cars up. Where can call up in the technicality of five cents men adding inside their gas price? Today can be two oh nine, tomorrow can be two fifteen, tomorrow, the next day can be one ninety six. That always fluctuates in the taxes included inside that price. And so when people say I'm going to another area to get gas, I just think that is another way for people to just say, well, this is hard for me to do, so I'll save that for, 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 for an answer. But to say no to that solution, I would ask those individuals to put a solution on the table quick in a hurry, because if we don't pay gasoline tax, the city of Selma will be paying and making sure we repair people vehicles. And that is something that's real, that's been going on even to the point that people insurance say that insurance companies thinking about dropping their coverage from the city. Uh, and that can be between fifteen to two thousand dollars per vehicle, and the time is damaged. And, um, trust me, people will, they will, uh, contact the city. And we can't prove their vehicle was not damaged based off city streets, but they will do that and say, well, my vehicle is broken, having to sell the streets. I just think the solution should be brought to the table, people are against that one.
Yeah, and I think, uh, the argument you just made would, would fare very well on that tour, uh, across the wards. I think that, uh, what you're saying, you know, people are saying, you gotta, you gotta have gas anyway, and how dare you go to Valley Grand. Those are some of the things that if you, if, if you were to consider going on tour and, and have a more intimate conversation, I think that would be helpful, we, some of the stuff you said right now might be helpful in a more intimate conversation, and then people may say, hey, we need this gas tax, or they may say, Mayor, sit down, man, we don't need it, we don't know. Uh, so if you.
When the conversation had, he's gonna say, you admit Mr. Boy not going on tour.
Yeah.
Yes, but.
Yeah. When I offer you this, we're, we're not saying go along, uh, but what I'm saying is, if this falls flat on its face, then let's consider going out of City Hall into the wards on tour and say, okay, y'all, your council members cast a vote, and the vote represented, y'all are gonna get that. So let's talk about solutions, okay, let's put it out there, let's put it on the table, mark it on the board, have them, we're gonna do it. But I just think it would be, uh, effective, I, I, I still stand by that, I think it would be effective.
But you, you would have to agree that we can't say no to the surgeon if we don't have another solution. I think saying no to, the only answer we have is basically just a way to say, well, I don't wanna deal with that. I would encourage any of you who takes a part to say, I'm, I'm against something, say, well, it's easy to say, well, I'm against, but it's more difficult for people to say what they're for, so even that conversation, that's a conversation we need to have.
Yeah, 'cause I think everybody's saying, I'm against the gas tax, because it's on the table.
Right, 'cause they were against the Avalor tax, and that was on the table, right.
If you offer a list of things and say, that's what I have on my card on a ward meeting, I had a list of things. And, uh, some of our, some of the ward members are here now tonight, they got an opportunity to say, I'm for this, and I'm against it.
But the gasoline taxes.
Everything the landlords on there about, anything concerning landlord, who should be responsible?
Right.
A landlord or a tenant can't say, I mean, I have some stuff on this, good stuff on this, but they were able to say, I'm for this, okay, you vote this, I'm for this. But this item against.
But the gasoline tax is a user tax, it's a friendly tax.
Yeah.
I mean, people pay it at their own, you know, expense when they, when they travel. If you're not traveling that much, you don't pay it, I mean, like, I just, you know, but you know, North Bronx, North Bronx is a roller coaster. You got some other streets that are roller coasters, and so those same individuals called the mayor, I said, what are you gonna do about these streets that's in Ward Four? Ain't doing nothing if I don't have a solution.
And we gotta stay on tour.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Also too, Mayor, uh, let me first of all, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, coming up with a, with a solution. Uh, basically, you did your job, brought it to the council, but in a poor area like this, it can be viewed as a progressive tax. And also, I know Councilwoman James, when you and I were talking about going around to each ward, and the community engagement is very important, it's how you market it to, to get people to buy into it. Also, it's a lot of unknown on the state level, you know, it's fluctuating back and forth.
Right.
How much they're gonna, what percentage and everything, but one thing too, Mayor, um, you don't wanna set up a competitive environment.
Right.
Because most of the competitive environment, um, no one.
Right.
And far as with the sand tax, that can be one option that we can look at as one of the solutions, but I know we cannot tax tobacco, uh, that's already, you know, cleared.
Is it at the cap?
Uh, tobacco is here, not sand tax. And also, we appreciate some solutions tonight from Mr. Brooks, and my suggestion would probably be, if this happens to fail, it's the, running an account firm, because I know we do, uh, far as Tuskus, far as delivering the gas type, the account firm go out to make sure that each station will handle what they're supposed to be paying. And the city don't pay, they just give a portion of what they get away. That could be one avenue that we can look at, um, I just found that out, uh, about two days ago.
Well, what we've seen consistently for the last seven years, the training Selma has been constant. So if people haven't missing their gasoline tax adequately, this has been transpiring for the last decade. So it's not to say since, well, we've been off two years, all of a sudden we're not collecting taxes.
It just been going forward, even back in two oh eight, when I first walked into.
But I wanna say, if there's any misappropriation of gasoline tax, I wanna err on, on the side of saying it's not a significant amount. Um, we're talking about millions of dollars. We only, we only collect six hundred thousand a year, well, average, and six to seven hundred thousand a year in gasoline tax. It's gonna take millions to repay, to resurface it, and to restrict the citizens of Selma. Um, so even if we come up with an extra fifty thousand, it's not gonna be sufficient enough, um, to repair, to restrict, and repay the streets in Selma. What I would challenge the council on, however, um, if the council feel fit not to go in this direction, every year the council get oil lease money, to stop dividing the oil lease money off. Now allow the Zankoff Office to fix at least one major street inside the city of Selma, uh, with the oil lease money, 'cause we can do more together than we can apart. Um, not the money that you have right now, but the money that when we come in April, we use it to the tune of a hundred seventy thousand dollars, we can at least probably fix one street with that kind of money. I think it's some kind of.
Thanks, Chris.
Gas, gas, gas.
Well, it depends on how long the street is. So, so you agree that it's efficient, you agree, the cost is efficient, and I'm glad you just.
Yeah, it take money.
Right, so it's gonna take a whole lot of money to fix these streets in Selma, um, but, uh, I just want, you know, I appreciate whatever stance you take. My job is to bring the problem, to bring a solution, I've done that. Um, there's no personal feelings in this, it's, it's doing what we think is best for Selma. Everybody don't have the same perspective, everybody don't see the same solution, I understand that, I can appreciate that, not trying to force this on anyone, I just ask you to consider the measure I brought before you.
Thank you.
I think I have, I think the same councilwoman, Thomas, folks, the other councilwoman, that's the councilwoman.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to address this. Um, a lot of the people, I talked, uh, with, uh, my ward people, we talked about the tax. A lot of the people know that we have, uh, they know that our infrastructure have been like this for many years, it ain't, it just, it did just come. And they also were talking about, you know, when you say pavement, you know, under that pavement, we have a lot of old rotten pipes that has caused, uh, this caving by just paving these streets, going out paving these streets. There's a lot of other infrastructure that we have to do.
Right.
And, um, um, a lot of people don't feel that, uh, right now about the, the, the five six gas tax, because they feel like that, uh, we need to give accountable, and accountable of what we have done with other money that, uh, that the city receives, you know, to do with, uh, work out in the field. Just like we use one example, you know, we, we, we receive, we bought a pot truck. We bought a pot truck where some of the holes were as, was not as big.
Right.
And when you say these large holes, these are caving holes, these ain't on, this cannot be for public work. In some of public, uh, we bought a pot truck, which was back to start going out during the little, you know, little areas. And we know for many years what my area is from Tenth Avenue all the way back in that area, the, the recurve, it needs redone.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it is by going out fixing that in that area, the little potholes, when it rain, it comes right back. And I think that, uh, they know, the citizens know, but the citizens want to be able, if it's, uh, we know we need a rate tax somewhere, but right now the citizens don't want the five six gas tax, 'cause they feel like this house, this house is not in order. When it's dealing with our finance, uh, they will know. I'm, I'm just being straight talk with you, because I, 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 I went around, and we talked about, we know how our living condition is in our ward. And a lot of people said that, uh, right now that our City Hall house is not in order with the finance, and give it more money when we can't, when they ask us questions, uh, people ask us questions, they put you through tests to see if you can give them the right answer. I can't give an answer that I don't know as a leader, because I only go by what you, what we receive from the finance department. Right now, I find for the, with the months that been out, we got workers out here, been out here for months. We got people that lost their health insurance, uh, you know, all that, that's a burden on each one of us.
That's right.
I don't know how nobody else feel, but I think about these people.
Right.
And they were saying, okay, you, y'all wanna raise five cent gas tax, but what about, who's gonna be the overseer of how it's gonna be done? Right now, you guys don't even know how money being paid out for something else. Right now, they saying we need to get our, house is going, we need somebody in the finance office to give numbers on things. So it's not that the people don't want it, it's the people feel that it's been a letdown when they dealing with finance. So I'm just speaking it for me by going out, 'cause I have had calls, we talked, and some answers, I tell them, you know, I don't hold, I don't hold this, this entire panel for what has happened for years, but a lot of structure is caving in all over, and by just going out paving, what about the pipes up under there? Those pipes are, are gone, you can see it, uh, in some of our areas. It's gonna take a lot, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna take us to, uh, and it's gonna take the citizen to, to trust, and, and let's build our, let's get our office, our finance stuff back right. And I believe the people will, I believe the people would come, would, would come up with, with some kind of tax.
Well, three things, Councilwoman, um, when I ran for office or you ran for office, we knew we were coming to a city that the finances was in shackles, it was depleted. Um, this has not happened over the last two years. We inherited, as Councilwoman Youngblood has eloquently said tonight, we inherited a broken house. Um, and so when people say, what are you doing with the money, there's no money to do anything with. If you recall, when we first came into office, we made all department head, parked the vehicles, trying to save on gasoline costs. Um, we stopped hiring people with attrition, when we got down to a smaller, um, staff. And we started off at three twenty seven, my first year, we getting down to two seventy seven. I came before the councilman, Councilman Shaw, I gave you all the budget, and I said, the cuts in the budget are gonna be drastic, to the point we would have to lay some people off. Many council members laughed, said, Mayor, do what you have to do. And councilmen and Shaw, they urged me, Mayor, do what you have to do. We ended up continuing due to attrition, lent people off, we never hired back what people were. The council passed the budget this past year, the budget came back, it was not sufficient enough to maintain the employees that we had. As you know, we had to have a layoff because the money was not there. Department Labor contacted us and said, if you don't pay these individuals, you don't have money to pay them, you need to lay them off, or we're gonna fine you from two to twenty thousand dollars per employee if you do not pay them. Um, as you have said, um, our finances, we got to get that order well, as you know, the council controls the finances, it's not the mayor office, the council controls the finances. And so when we start having those conversations, when we start having those conversations, we need to be real with each other. Um, council controls the finance, the law is very, very clear on that. And so, and I think the women in the finance department do an outstanding job. I don't question their, their intellect, I don't question their integrity, nor do I question their character. I think that they're doing an excellent job in the resources which they have. And so I don't want us to get distracted about the streets, because what you're saying about the streets, you're right. It's what's up under the streets that need to be repaired, and that's what this gasoline tax will address as well. All of the infrastructure when it comes to streets, the sewer system in your stormwater drainage, that will be part of this whole package. And so, you know, I'm not here to debate whether or not about the other issues, it's either a yes or no, we've had this conversation for eighteen months now.
Oh, well, one point meeting, the, the one, one meeting, and eight, would not do the whole, would not cover this city, because there's a, this whole entire city, it, it, the infrastructure. If you travel all over and ride all in different areas, the best area probably got the best infrastructure, is the roads are better, and the neighborhoods are better, it's where you live, one, two, and, I'm just being truthful with you. Uh, if you go out.
When will your daughter live?
Uh, well, she lives, that's why she moved there, sure, she wanted to move back, and I don't like it, 'cause if mother could do.
Everybody has to move all these days.
Oh, yeah, him too, all right. So, but I'm just saying, the best infrastructure areas, uh, areas are like back out that way. But in the, in Ward, six, seven, four, five.
Two.
Wait a minute, let me say eight.
One.
But, and three, so what I'm just saying. But do, what I'm just saying.
She said, I make sure she said.
I, I, I said everybody. But I'm just, I'm using, if you go in those areas, those are not potholes, they are not potholes.
What happens, Councilwoman, usually store is potholes, and then we continue to prepare them to end up coming to Seacoast.
Well, that's what I'm telling you, but it start off as pothole, but when rain and rain, and you got drains stocked up and more water, that makes, uh, it work, it washed away all the dirt up under there, and it start caving in. So you see that this is, this is, this is something that just didn't start.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, Paul, Councilwoman Jackson.
A couple of things, and I wanna speak first to what my home colleagues asserted about Wards one and two. I grew up in Ward one, at three oh two Barrett Road, and as you all know, that, um, house is torn down. Um, that was the house that I knew most of my life, and was really dear to me, and the reason it was torn down is because of the infrastructure in Ward one, we did not, and currently still, um, do not have any drainage system, system, um, in place on Barrett Road. And so every time it ran, it backed up into my mom's house, and I know Mayor Melton knows, um, because he's helped us move out.
Saved you from the flood.
Saved us from the flood, he did as a child, he did do that. Um, the second thing I wanted to speak to Mayor Melton, um, is the plan, we referenced it, I would like to give you a copy of that. If you'll take it, um, Stephen Brooks, actually, let me give you mine, because he's a member of my ward, and I get it back from you.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Brooks, I get it back from you, since you're a member of my ward. Okay, um, these are solutions, and Ellen Jones provided solutions back in September when he came. I, I'm not going to debate the issues or even, um, discuss it on this evening, but I would like to say that when you assert that the council controls the finances, and I send you email after email after email, including emails in reference to the gas tax, and I, and I don't get response in emails to the financing, it doesn't appear that we control the finances, because I ask you, and if you go to the young ladies who, I don't have a problem with their character, intellect, or integrity, I don't think any council member does, but when we ask them for information, and they said they have to get the mayor's approval, and I.
I know that, you just told us something.
Yes, oh, that's every, that's every time.
But the process used to, uh, the question with that, the question with Ms. Ivey.
Come at the office if they will, please be quiet.
When, when, when I send out, uh, requests or come to by the office, and they say they have to get your approval, then I send your office email, and I don't get a response. And the response that I do get is that, actually, you stated that you were having technical difficulties, and then I got an email that stated that you didn't have an email address, um, neither did you answer emails, that makes me feel that you're withdrawing or not allowing the city council to have access to the various information that you said, with that we have authority.
That's scheduled for you when you come to finance department, whatever you wanna ask them, please ask them, I'm really proud that they told you that. Um, so, uh, that's scheduled, you know, you wanna be with them.
Okay, how about?
Anytime you want to.
One o'clock Friday.
Call Ms. Oliver, you wanna talk, you name, you wanna talk.
Okay, and I'll make a way, okay, that you say.
Let me reflect that.
Yes, please make a reflect that. Also, you informed me that the last time you were here on January twenty second, that we could set up a meeting, and I was like.
There was two, there was two emails since our two days, and I was told that you said you can do those two days, you need three days.
I've never gotten an email from your office and reflected, never got a response back.
When you come Friday, we'll talk to Councilwoman.
Amen, thank you.
Mayor, can you explain the rationale between the two ordinance?
The two ordinances?
Can you explain the rationale between the two ordinance?
What, what part did you ask? One is five, one is three.
One is five, one is, but you explain why we got both these on.
So, um, the five cents is what would be more adequate for us to try to address all the city of Selma to, to, to get a bond that is sufficient enough to address all of the city. I understand some council members had some, um, hesitation about that. And so in the conversation, Sam said to me, well, Mayor, I can't do the five, I can do the three cents. And so that's why the three cents came available, which if we did three cents, it would put us right in the line with Montgomery, um, they'll be at seven, we'll be at seven. Uh, and so both of those options was placed at the table at the same time to allow the council to vote on both of those, those, those measures, either five or the three cents.
Mayor, I think we've, uh, we discussed the possibility of three cents as a possible compromise and, and I did what I said I was going to do, I went out to the citizens, I talked to the citizens, trying to find out what their objections were, what their concerns were and continue to move on and actually, believe it or not, I had a little traction, uh, and things started to move kind of, well, surprisingly, uh, constantly blew me away. It wasn't until we got to the bond issue and we got to the asphalt paving company that completely derailed my ability to have an effective conversation with the citizens in this community, uh, much to my chagrin, because again, uh, while I believe we do have dire financial issues that we did not, you inherited, we all inherited, and we do need to figure out some solution to them, I was really hoping that a compromise down to three cents would, would be something the citizens would go for. Unfortunately, the, the conversation about the bond, given the financial status of the city and the, and lack of true information regarding that, uh, as well as the asphalt paving company, uh, you know, again, you know, we had an issue trying to put the right fuel in the vehicle. So the citizens know all this kind of stuff and it really did set the conversation back a considerable bit and we talked about how that had happened and, uh, we tried to move forward and trying to communicate again to, to reiterate to the citizens what that meant, what that didn't mean, uh, and just unfortunately, we were not able to come to a consensus that was going to be positive regarding this vote. Uh, I do hope that we continue to move forward, again, I want to find a solution that we can all work together on. Uh, I was really hoping this would be that, uh, and much, uh, you know, again, I didn't do it, uh, but that conversation really did derail the possibility of trying to get me to go the right direction on this thing as far as the three cent or the five cent. So I want you to understand that, I did do what I said I was going to do, I did try to share those objections as we got those encountered to figure out what we could do to overcome those objections, it was to, to divulge more information regarding the financial situation of the city or, you know, whatever it was. I mean, again, if you let us know what the problem is and what you need from us as, as elected official, I want to get it to you and, and I'll, I'll set that concern. Uh, unfortunately, the totality of those concerns were so great, we just didn't have enough time to address all of them. So I do hope that if this does not go past and we have issues with that, I will, uh, reiterate again, I hope that there is a, a time for us to go get together in the ward and have that conversation where they can ask direct questions to you, sir, regarding the intention of that, I know it was a bigger picture view, uh, but obviously trying to get the citizens to understand that when it's all smashed together and, and that context was a little difficult to do. So I would welcome the opportunity for you to come to Ward one or to come out to your home, so to speak.
I support the mayor.
I, I, I know, sir, and I was going to say.
My neighbors supported too.
Well, I, 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 those neighbors said we were going to get there. So, uh, again, um, uh, you know, again, perhaps again, that's a reason for us to sit down and have a more profound conversation with the residents of Ward one, uh, you the mayor of, of this area and of course, you as a city council, I welcome that opportunity and really had hoped that we'd be able to find a consensus that would work well for the city, given the financial concerns that we had.
Councilman, sir, I think we can move forward. This, go ahead and, um, give me my report.
Yes, sir.
The public works, the middle headed public here on, uh, Thursday, on February the twenty-first. And we took, uh, comments, pros and cons from the citizens. There was some citizen that was, uh, uh, for this gas tax because they clearly saw the need, not only because we had a powerpoint presentation of streets, uh, that incorporated the entire city, every street in city Selma is, is in disrepair. And of course, uh, the ordinance, uh, the five cent ordinance, which is zero one oh two dash eighteen nineteen, which is put on first reading in the advanced council meeting, three cents on zero one oh one dash eighteen nineteen, also put on first reading. Uh, you, you all heard the mayor's report about the need for revenue to fix, uh, our streets, which has brought to our attention. Mayor, I was hoping this would have had that same powerpoint presentation at the ninth meeting, so the council could see, uh, the work showing the streets that, that really was in dis, disarray. Uh, I don't know if you all worked that, yet paid gadget or not.
I'm not sure what's going on up here.
Well, the purpose was to, uh, have the same streets, uh, on a powerpoint presentation that was headed for here at least. But, uh, you know, the facts are, our streets need repair. Facts are, we need revenues to be prepared, so the facts are, current revenues ain't going to do it. And I'm glad the mayor explained the difference between the two ordinance, one is not predicated on the other. So with that being said, I'm, um, making a motion that the council adopt ordinance zero one oh two dash eighteen nineteen, which is the five cents gasoline tax.
The rest, sir. Sir. Do we have discussion? Any call discussion? Roll call, Ms. Harris.
President Bullock?
No.
Councilwoman Bowley?
No.
Councilwoman Yungler?
No.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
No.
Councilwoman Randolph?
No.
Councilwoman Assured?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Gas tax.
Gas tax, five cents.
Five cents.
No. Councilwoman Johnson?
On behalf of Ward, yes.
Okay, moving forward, uh, I move ordinance zero one oh one dash eighteen nineteen, which is three cents gasoline tax. Be approved by this council, which will give us some revenue where we can, uh, at least maintain a core showing of me, have a, got problems and will now get some resources that we can deal with.
The rest, sir. Sir.
Most of the floor, uh, Councilman Assured, recent, recent sales tax, second by Councilman, um, Johnson. Oh, Gaz, I'm sorry, Gaz. Roll call, my own board.
President Bullock?
No.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Reluctantly, no.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Um, reluctantly, no.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
No.
Councilwoman Randolph?
No.
Councilwoman Assured?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilwoman Johnson?
On behalf of Ward, yes.
Mr. President, since this council has rejected the recommendation forthcoming from the mayor, that will address the, um, very issues of our infrastructure, then I'm going to ask the, this council, whose responsibilities are maintaining our streets, getting, body of council people and come up with a plan where we can deal with this issue, it has to be dealt.
We have one plan that we can consolidate our ordinance, that can be a start, a start.
I make that motion that we do it, Mr. President, if we consolidate our ordinance, that would give us at least a hundred thousand dollars where we can start entertaining, doing some things for the city. We can stop being selfish with this.
Most on the floor.
Well, let's not be, let's not, let's not call yourself selfish, let's, let's talk about that for a second, if I could address that. First of all, I'm looking out for the citizens of Ward one. So I'm not being selfish by voting for my citizens because that's who put me in this position to be there. I don't appreciate accusations of selfishness. With, with that being said.
I say Ward.
I know you do, and we go back and forth on this, I get it, but I will say, we're talking about, uh, and I, and again, I mentioned earlier before and I'll say this again, Mayor, if the city of Selma can take the ten thousand dollars I got in my old lease account or whatever it is in my old lease account and get my ward cleaned up and use that money for that, then the next money that comes in for twenty nineteen, I'd be happy to go.
That's what we're talking about.
Just want to make sure I'm clear?
Right.
Again, all I want to do is get the holes filled in Ward one and then whatever's left over after the holes, holes are filled in Ward one, we go ahead and get over it.
Got you, got you.
Well, maybe that's another issue, I'll get it.
This could be part of phase one of the process we moving to, uh, get rid of this problem. Get rid of this problem. This could be harder, we don't have to worry about voting on tonight, but if DM and Johnson won what we have here and also with Mr. Johnson thoughtful, then we can move forward with that.
Oh, you said that we don't have to vote on this tonight, is that correct? Because this is something that need to be explored and discussed right, I have during the work session and we need to make sure that the funding, that we know exactly where it's going to be.
Our lease comes out in April, in April.
It does come out in April and I've been asking for new signs, I had someone to, um, actually email me in twenty seventeen, it's now twenty nineteen from Minnesota, and she was very unhappy and she could not use her GPS system coming to Selma because I didn't have street signs, I had thirteen missing there and now eighteen missing, they just love the street signs in Ward three because they're cashed down, they're really nice and so they're taking them away. And so, the, the, right, and so the, the, um, the mayor's office administration stated we didn't have funding to do that and I could do that with my oil lease money and I have done that and I'm hoping that public works will actually put them up and I don't, I have any other, a, a contract to have someone put them up, but those are things that we don't think, uh, uh, you know, as the mayor's office has sent me, I'm going to do, um, because you know I like to have at least three quotes on everything that we do, but he sent me a quote because I have nothing over my manholes but crates. Um, and he sent me a quote for twenty-four thousand dollars saying, use your oil lease money because, and we have some that don't even have crates on them, like at Mayberry and Park, that someone could just walk right up to the sidewalk into the hole. And so I tried to make, to make him aware of those, but, um, I have a twenty-four thousand dollar bill that I'll be coming to some of you on the system, but those are the type of things that if we're taking all of the funds and putting them in, putting them together, that may not be, we may not be able to do something. So this is a conversation that I would definitely like to have and you know I would like to have a consensus that we're going to get financial information, financial information before I give you additional funding.
That's right. Councilwoman Benjamin, and then we'll go to, anybody else after Councilwoman Benjamin? Hello, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, and then we'll go to the new report.
Okay, so there's not a hole in the city, um, that I have been asked to contribute to that I have not. Um, there's not a caving that I have not have filled, that I have not, I have not had to ask any council member for any oil lease, uh, but I have given, I have given to holes and cavings all across the city included in Ward four. So I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do, I'm going to finish the ditches in Ward four, because I have to finish the ditches in Ward four. I made up my mind that the things that will not be done, uh, by those that I feel should be doing them, I'm going to go do it myself. And so we started on the ditch project, I'm going to finish the ditch project, y'all know the last time we met, I told y'all that I'm going to get a contractor to go on every single street, uh, to record every single pothole. I told y'all that already. I told y'all that I have part of my community that's in a food desert, so I'm going to put up that farmer's market, like I said. Uh, y'all know that there's a school about to close in Ward four and I don't want another abandoned building in Ward four. And, uh, Councilman Assured has, um, been one of the ones who said, if you do something with that building, I'm going to help you out.
I agree.
And he's going to do that. I'm going to, for the first time ever, I may need to ask y'all for some of your oil lease because these projects are, are huge, but I don't want that building to sit there and, and just decay. And so you all know that it's for the entire community, just because it's in Ward four, it's going to be an incubator if it go, if all goes right, if it's the Lord's will and the creek don't rise. If all goes right, that's what it's going to be. Uh, but those are the things I am going to do and so if I have something left over, I'll put it in pot, uh, but I'm going to complete those right now.
Mr. President. Hello, Councilwoman, Miss, uh, Randolph, then Councilwoman Bowley.
Uh, well, Mr. President, something is, uh, uh, a while back we had, uh, going to make you, or the, uh, bank note where you can go and, uh, you can go and, uh, see what we got in the banks. So I'd like to make, Ms. Jackson as well, you know, San Lawrence as well, I seen.
Ms. Jackson, I want to check her.
Well, no, I want you to check your money, I want you to be able to go and get the information that you need to get without going through the mayor's office.
Okay.
That's all, I just want you, I want you to be able to go to the bank, uh, read the bank and, and we put your name on the council, you can see.
No, I don't want my name on the council, you can give it. Uh, but use ID and password and I can give it. That's all we, exactly.
I mean, we can, we can do that for everyone, I mean, it just get, I mean, so we want to be on the.
I don't want my own.
So, so, so that's what we need to do then.
We want the website for this program.
I mean, we could. You said three weeks.
I mean, that'll be up soon, everybody can see.
No, what, what we talking about is, is, you know, state, because, you know, I know the mayor, uh, the office down at yours, uh, let me know saying this is how we got the count, but you know, none of us believe that, if you do, I don't know what bus you rolled on. So, but what I'm saying is, uh, since we having problems, you know, for you giving your information, you know, I, I really feel you, but you say you don't want to be on that, that council, you want.
The user ID and password and I think all of us.
Yeah, so, cause, cause we.
What has it said in, in my office currently, I have a user ID and I have the password, I can look at it, I can't click and move, manage everything, all I'm allowed to do is access, um, access the information and look at, read on it, yes, but I do not touch my name on.
Okay, so, Mr. President, can you, can, can.
Yeah, we can do that, but you can always look at what's put in too. All right, Councilman Assured.
But he said he going to be on the website, he said he going to be able to see and.
Hello, Councilman Assured.
I can recall, Mr. President, at some point, everybody up here has been very generous to our colleagues when it comes to our oil lease money, especially when they're in crunch. I'm remembering that the eight trip project issue focused on, in on Ward seven was almost at a loss because there was no match that we could give to eight decker. And eight decker had told us that if you don't give us four hundred thousand dollars worth of match, that we're going to pull this project. That money was not in the committee of development line item, so what we had to do, all of us had to hand it up. I think I gave five, six, maybe eight thousand dollars and I really did because even though it did not impact my ward, it impacted my city. So my point is, is that, yes, we all got respective wards, but our goal is our city, which is inclusive of all eight wards. So we just got to be more understanding about the needs of our city, of what's happening in Ward six and necessarily happening in Ward four, what's happening in Ward four and necessarily happening in Ward one. But nevertheless, it is still the city itself and I just want, I want to just be mindful of that. When it comes down to a special need, it may not be beneficial to go per se ward, but thank of it is good and art for the city.
Councilman Randolph, going to go to the committee reports, I don't have to cater to nobody.
Yeah, yeah. My, my colleague mentioned that, uh, uh, when, when the city had to come up with that money for the, uh, eight trip, uh, we voted, uh, to, to get it out of our lease, remind us, uh, the mayor didn't pay for that two day before we even voted. So that money came from somewhere before it came from us. So they found that money, we, we should, I, we should have our money back because it was paid for the four, uh, two day before we even voted on it. So I want my, uh, my money back that I gave to you because I got some projects in my ward that I did done.
They, 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 they did it, check, all they done.
That's it.
Money from our lease.
They did that before we even voted, that, that, that was, that was done two day prior before we even voted to give you that money.
Okay, all right, committee reports, the minister of committee, Councilwoman Bowley here, committee to development, Councilwoman Youngblood, public works, Councilman Assured, you voted.
Maybe we'll spread that, but we got our first reading ordinance, this gunshot ordinance.
What we going?
We put, we put our first reading?
Yes, sir.
Where?[1786.66]
Councilwoman Johnson.
Number one.
Number one.
Thank you for that.
All right.
But, but, I think for the public's, uh, information, I think we need to be aware of what this ordinance is. So, I'm committed.
Go ahead.
Uh, this ordinance is to curtail the sporadic gunshot that is so basic in our community. Uh, this ordinance is, is a replica of Montgomery, because although we got a gunshot ordinance, there is no penalties, uh, involved in our ordinance. So, this ordinance will bring about some penalties for those violators. For the first offense, a hundred dollar fine, and seven days of imprisonment in the city jail without consideration of suspending the sentence. Meaning, the judge cannot suspend a sentence, you haven't been arrested in jail. Second offense, three hundred dollars, thirty days of imprisonment, same consideration of non, non-suspended or sentenced. Third offense, four hundred dollars, four hundred dollar fine, and forty-five days of imprisonment in the city jail without consideration of suspending the sentence. Fourth, and all subsequent convictions, a five, is five hundred dollar fine, and imprisonment in the city jail for a minimum period of sixty days under maximum of six months. So, we are gonna get tough on these, uh, as my good friends, the DA calls outlaw with his gun, we're gonna get tough on them because, one, they're putting people's lives in danger, two, they're creating havoc, three, they're, uh, destroying the spot. And as my good friend, Councilman Bowline, so often say, "What goes up will come down," this is a thing that must, it will come down. So, just be aware, violators, that not only will we have a law, we will have some penalties, it is a testament to law.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman Ashore, Rick Arison, Councilman Johnson, John, children in violence.
No, other than the, um, night of hope, Selma's night of hope is scheduled for April third, that is Wednesday. We're asking, um, you all, we're sending out letters to the churches, asking that they please join us on that evening. You know, we have food and fun, and it's the word of God, and so we're asking that you come out. Dr. Christine Nelson will be joining us again from England, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ashore.
The name?
April third, Wednesday, April third.
You're saying three zero or...
Three.
Three.
Third.
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 All right, um, public buildings, Councilwoman Johnson.
This, this, uh, you know, you, you, that meeting?
Which one is it tomorrow?
No, no, not that meeting, uh, I'll call you in the morning for the meeting with the Ellen, but the other meeting. You want to go to the press with the, with the email, you want to give to the press, for Ellen?
But, I, I, my mind is...
You know the email that you received about the meeting for the, the, for France or the bond?
Oh, okay, okay.
The meeting they got.
Yeah, okay, I was, uh, probably, probably got first reading.
You know what, what you said.
Yeah, 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 I remember.
What you want to do?
It's up to you.
Well, it is, sir.
We, we would, uh, let's try to leave it for now.
Yeah, we, okay.
Okay, and if not, we just have to move forward.
Focus.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
I will take your name.
All right, Captain, quickly, Councilman Johnson.
Uh, I'm ready for it.
Okay, all right, at this, do I have some rolling for the...